Six, and have always been outstanding people in the community, always supportive. You get a wide variety of feed there as well as produce, gardening supplies, and of course, most of us go there to get our plants from their greenhouse. And so we again congratulate the Zieg and Vine family, Kenny and his family, and thank them for their support of the city of Waynesville. And Bill, do you have anything else to add?
I just like to say, I can't believe it's been that many years since I've been a visitor there. They've done a fantastic job for the community. Always get people down and go and get some of their products.
I bet you and I both have been there a lot, haven't we, Bill?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate.
Time does fly. So again, we're sorry that those people were not there. To be honored, we will be giving, getting that proclamation to Kenny and his family. We'll continue on with our board reports. And again, because we are in such an interesting and upsetting, I've been using the word uncertain times, we haven't had very many meetings. And under our boards and commissions, we did not have either one. So under the park board, is there anything there that anyone would need to say? Mr. Harrell, anything under park board?
Mayor, I think we're okay. We do have a written report that we passed out this city council, but they didn't have a meeting. So I believe that there's really, I believe we can go on to the next item.
Very good. And just to say that farmers market is still proceeding. They're open from eight to noon. They are operating very tight restrictions on the number of people that are allowed in there. And I would say also that they're only giving, or only selling food. There are no crafts or anything like that. And then I believe, Mr. Harrell, that we've announced many times that our park board, that our trail extension is going to go ahead. And so y'all keep your eye open for that. Planning and zoning also did not meet, and I don't believe we have any issues there. Bruce?
No.
Okay. And moving along, our standing committee reports, our first one, of course, as always, is our utilities, and that is Councilman France. Mike, how are you today?
I'm good.
Very good. Carry on, big boy.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I have utilities, supposed to be roads and grounds.
I know, we have a ground unit now, yeah.
Oh, okay, very good. Got it. Thank you, utilities. Got it.
Thanks, everybody. Please cover up your ears. This is my COVID-19 disease. There's nothing to do on that department.
Department uptick, electric department. Mr. McDonald was reporting for them because Tuesday.
We don't have supervisors who want to stay up. That might be. You want to turn that off?
The mayor needs to put hers on mute while she's listening.
Okay. Anyhow, right away, Clarence, we have put that on, that's been kind of put on hold temporarily because of the COVID-19. Our electric department is still working every day. I ran into some, they're still marking poles and stuff like that, so which we were at 90% when we had my meeting, and they were heading up to try and finish it off the other day when I linked up with them. Waste water department, Mr. McDonald stated that the water department had 12 work orders, four new meters installed, had two water main breaks, which they were able to handle with the reduced work crews, and a little bit of assistance from some other folks. Sewer department, three work orders, they camered six mains and jetted six main lines. Mr. Harrell presented the committee report to the, based upon an inspection that was done in December on our sewage treatment plant, and we were found to be in total compliance. Gas department, Mr. McDonald said the gas department were still walking lines and assisting the building department with ongoing projects. We had citywide spring cleanup on April 9th. As far as I know, it went well. I know up there in my neighborhood, people had stuff laid out. Some of it was stuff that was not authorized to be laid out, so it was still sitting there on Friday morning. So they're getting it in. There was a necessity for closed session. We went into closed session at 3:50. We came out at 4:52. Councilman Connolly made a motion to approve the utility billing paying agreement, along with certain modifications. Councilman Wilson seconded, and we voted unanimous in favor. Councilman Connolly made the motion to send the resolution in support of a letter of intent to extend an amendment to an agreement between the city of Waynesville and Zieg and Vine sanitation for solid waste management to August 31st, 2020. Councilman Wilson seconded, and all were in favor. Having no further business, the meeting was adjourned at 4:54 PM. Our next meeting will be May sometime. This says April 7th. That's when I had this meeting.
The date either. Mike, any questions for mine?
We'll have it in May.
At 3:30. Subject to your questions, we do have a couple of items.
Motion to pass tonight, or at least offer. And again, most of us are very well aware of these issues, and this is mainly because of all the things that are going on in our community, as well as the coronavirus crisis. So this is a resolution 2020-002. And I don't believe that needs to be read by you, Mr. Doyle. I will just read it. It says, "A resolution in support of a letter of intent to extend an amendment to an agreement between the city of Waynesville and Zieg and Vine sanitation for solid waste management and recycling services, fixing an effective date." I would entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. France, second by Mr. Connolly.
Okay, Mr. Harrell, do you have anything to, other information on this?
We're just extending our solid waste agreement with Zieg and Vine until the end of August, from June to the end of August.
Very good. And again, that exists for some time. And clerk, would you call the roll? Councilman Davis?
Yeah.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Mr. Connolly, too.
I was waiting. She went from one to the other. Yeah, I second it, so obviously I approve.
Yes, he said yes.
Apologize for all of that. We're just not in our normal places. That resolution is passed unanimously, and we will be doing business with Zieg and Vine till the end of August. We have finance and human, did I do everything right, Michelle?
Yeah, Facebook just blinked for a moment, so.
Okay, very good. Finance and human resource committee, we did have a meeting. Councilman Liberty?
The meeting was called to order at 4 o'clock. I joined the meeting via video chat, and Councilman Jerry Brown was asked to stand in. My two council members were absent at that time. We did review bills. Motion was called by Councilman Brown to approve and pay the bills, seconded by me. Vote was called unanimous. Mr. Harrell reported that the committee, to the committee, that as of this date, we had over 3.6 million in Citibank accounts and 2.8 million in restricted accounts. Mr. Harrell reported, as of April 1st, we were at 29% of our budget projections in expenses and 28% of our budget projections in revenue. Mr. Harrell updated us on the city audit. The audit is right now being conducted via video chat or something, is it?
Virtually, basically, virtually, yes.
Virtually. And they will be coming to visit sometime in the near future to close things out. There was need for closed session for legal personnel and real estate. Councilman Brown moved to go into closed session, seconded by me. It was unanimous. We went into closed session at 4:12 PM. We returned to regular session at 4:45. Councilman Brown made a motion to move intergovernmental support agreement for Fort Leonard Wood Animal Shelter and Animal Control and Animal Care Contract with the city of St. Robert to city council for final approval. It was seconded by me. Vote was called at 4:12, unanimous. Being no further business, the committee meeting was adjourned at 4:45. The next meeting will be held May 14th at 2020, at 4:00 PM.
We have, as Clarence mentioned, we do have two, no, 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 under police committee, which is Councilman Liberty's committee also, there was no meeting held. But we have carried through with revamping our contracts with St. Robert as well as Fort Leonard Wood concerning animal services. And let's go ahead and do that, and then we'll see if there's any discussion, and let Mr. Harrell address it. So the first one we have is ordinance number 2415, and this is the one with St. Robert, Mr. Doyle.
First reading of ordinance number 2415, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert in regards to animal control and shelter services, fixing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2415, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Robert in regards to animal control and shelter services, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion by Liberty, second by Mr. Connolly.
Okay. And this again has to do with our contract with St. Robert. I believe we first started working with them in 2015. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so we're simply revamping our contract.
Renewing, basically, a very similar term, we're renewing.
Animal control, animal shelter agreement with the city of St. Robert.
And do any of you have any questions?
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Davis? Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Farnham?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Councilman France?
Yes, speak up.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
And Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
She's unanimous.
Again, contracting our services, working partners, being partners with our neighbor St. Robert. The second one is our neighbor at Fort Leonard Wood, and we've also been offering animal shelter care there also. And this is ordinance 2416. Mr. Doyle?
First reading of ordinance number 2416, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Secretary of the Army in regards to animal control and shelter services, fixing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2416, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the United States Secretary of the Army in regards to animal control and shelter services, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion.
Councilman Wilson made the motion.
Second.
Second by Mike Curtis along. And Mr. Harrell, anything you want to add there? Or we just simply also move in our contract with Fort Leonard Wood?
Yes, this is renewing it for a 10-year term with Fort Leonard Wood.
Okay, very good. And are there questions?
Questions with the city council?
No questions.
Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilman Connolly?
Yes, Mr. Connolly? Yes, he said.
Councilman Liberty?
Yes.
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yep.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnham?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
And Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very good, and I believe that also is unanimous. We again had no meeting with our airport board, and we do however have an ordinance there. And Mr. Harrell, is there anything you'd like to bring the public up to date with the airport? I know we did get some of the airport money from federal airport improvement program.
Yes, Mayor, I think we're due to get a grant of about $69,000 to help keep our airport operational during this time. We probably will bring that grant and bring that up to the, to the city council next month. Tonight, we have a agreement to extend our marketing grant. We're looking to extend our marketing grant out to the end of December. It gives us a little more time. Our marketing funds are probably not really effectively spent right now. It gives us a little time to, to market the airport when air travel becomes more readily available and opens up again.
And again, we have discussed this earlier, and so this is ordinance 2417, and it simply changes the date of our marketing grant. Mr. Doyle?
First reading of ordinance number 2417, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2376, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, fixing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance number 2417, an ordinance amending ordinance number 2376, authorizing the mayor of the city of Waynesville to execute a supplemental agreement for airport aid between the city of Waynesville, city of St. Robert, and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, fixing an effective date.
Very good. I'd entertain a motion.
Motion by Councilman Wilson.
Who did the second? Oh, Mr. Councilman Farnham, seconded the motion. Very good. Is there any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Connolly?
Good.
Councilman Liberty?
No.
Councilman Brown?
Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman France?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Farnham?
Yes.
Councilman Curtis?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that ordinance also passes.
And then we did have a meeting with economic development because we've got some business going on there. So Councilman Curtis?
Okay, we had a meeting on April 7th. The mayor was attending. We started a meeting at 5 o'clock. Mr. Harrell gave us an update on the Corona 19, or coronavirus, that the city employees are on, I guess, call it two shifts. Is that what we're calling it? And then it says here that the lobby is closed by appointment only. Is that still true?
Yes.
Okay. They have a need, they, you know, well. Their phones, so if you have questions, please call the city. If anybody comes in contact, there is a 40-day quarantine, and this is due to stay-at-home order by Plaski County Health Department and the governor. And then we talked about business spotlight. We've already talked about Zieg and Vine, feed and farm supply. Next month, we have on tap Odyssey Scuba, and then there was a motion made for the month of June for Piney River Tap Room.
And they really are on tap?
Yes, they are. And also, I want to tell our citizens, please support our small businesses as best you can. A lot of them are still doing carryout, so do support those people. Other business, the, because of the coronavirus, everything has been canceled in our parks. Now, I was down there today. Our trails are open, and they are being utilized. People are staying away from each other. But we do want to say, all playgrounds are closed. All the playgrounds are closed. Also, city, our kids in the park has tentatively been set for May 16th. There was a need to go into closed session. We went into closed session at 5:08. We came out at 5:30. Our next scheduled meeting is May 5th at 5 o'clock.
Very good. Bruce, that I forgot to mention, he just reminded me, is we did make a decision about our sports program. And I should have mentioned that under the park board, that we are going to, we were hoping, we were hoping we could have a summer season for our kids. Obviously, May is kind of out of the question. And so I believe it's June 1st?
Yes, June 1st. We're looking to start the season again. Of course, that's depend on the development of this crisis.
Very good. Okay, any questions for mine? Again, several things going on with his committee. Do we have any other business that needs to be brought up?
No, Mayor.
The administrative report.
Hey, Mayor.
We've covered most of things, but I'll just hit a few highlights. We have taken a lot of actions, of course, to protect the public and to protect our employees and keep our critical services going. We have waived the 3% transaction fee for those who pay their utility bills online. And we do have a utility billing relief program, and we're waiving some of the penalties and fees for people. We have in place a pay agreement with our departments, and we're gonna, we put a lot of this information out online and on Facebook. So that's available for the public if they need a little assistance with their utility bill during this time. The crews are still busy on the field. They're continuing to work on Northern Heights Water Tank. I think they tested the sewer in the industrial park. So we're getting a lot of work, work done converting our underground lines, our overhead lines to underground in the park, and just working on a variety of system in the, in the city. So that's my report. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
We still are doing business. And I've said to people, Bruce, that, you know, we have been trying to be careful with our funds and with our budget. You know, maybe some of our projects are nonessential, and if they are, we've been putting that off, trying to see what this is going to, how this is going to impact our budget. So everybody be alert to that. And any questions for Bruce? Before I do, council comments, can I just say, Tim Wallace, thank you so much for weathering the storm. He is really not in the room. He's up in the, what we call the video nest, and he's being very safe. But Mr. Wallace, we appreciate you, and appreciate you trying to put us on Facebook tonight. I believe there probably were some problems with it, but it's the first time we've done it, and so we apologize if there was. We are simply trying to be safe and follow all the rules. This Zoom thing has been quite an experience. And if at all possible, this mayor will be at May's city council meeting. So just be prepared. I'll be there with my mask on, because I don't, I don't care too much for this very much at all. Do you, Mike Curtis or Cecil? It's kind of, kind of odd, isn't it? It's kind of odd being there, yeah. So.
The 60th meeting I've done via Zoom.
Oh, you're used to it. That's why you just sit there and listen.
Oh, yeah. Meetings go faster on Zoom. Not, not everybody talks a whole lot.
Well, that's true, too. That's true, too. Okay, so council comments. Let's go ahead and start with our online people. Mike, why don't you go ahead and start us off?
Okay, I was down at the park, as I said, and the park looks beautiful. Please remember those people that are by themselves, normally, they probably need somebody to talk to. I am missing getting together with people. I'm absolutely missing.
Yes, I've been using this time to get to know myself again after all these various years. I've been through a wide range of emotions, and, uh, I found that I really like being with myself, uh, and I hope the rest of you do, uh, it's not a bad thing, uh, just enjoy what you're doing, where you're at, and who you're with, if you're with somebody, and if you're alone, that's okay, too, I've been enjoying it, so take care, I'll see you next month.
One of those huggers, and so I really miss that, let me tell you. So Bruce is next.
Dr. Brown?
On a lighter note, it is springtime, Zigganbine's has some great plants down there, so get out and do some shopping, and make your yards look great.
Well, I guess it's my turn.
Mr. Connolly?
And, I got a, a good, a make-you-feel-good story. About a month and a half ago, I arranged to have my wife's dream floor replaced with a new floor in her kitchen and dining room, okay? So I spent, it turned out to be a good thing, because you, you move all of the stuff from one room, or, or two rooms into other rooms, move it all back, but, everything was in disarray. Well, when I started putting things back, I found an envelope with no address on it, tucked in with a bunch of stuff that she had saved, including our son's first birthday card. And being the curious type, I opened the letter, I opened the envelope and found a letter. Well, the letter was addressed to me, uh, I got it in December 1965, while I was in